Morning and welcome to the January nineteenth Public Hearing Meeting for the 2016 Comprehensive Plan and Future Land Use Map Amendments. For those that are tuning in, this is a second of two meetings, the first of which was occurred on January 5th in front of the Planning Commission concerning our annual process of considering amendments to our future land use map. Jason, I understand you're prepped and ready and raring to go to try to present, or not try to, but to present these amendment recommendations to us, so we turn it over to you and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good morning Chairman Commissioners. I'm Jason Gaines from Community Development and this is our annual comprehensive plan amendment process. Today's agenda will be split into three different sections. We have zoning decisions, commission proposals and staff proposals. Zoning decisions are tracking rezonings throughout the year where the zoning was not in conformance with the future land use plan, so we take those cases, we go back to them and we make a decision on whether or not we want to change the future land use plan in order to match up with the zoning. Then we have commission proposals which consists of feedback gathered by staff from various sources, including you all, the Planning Commission, the general public at large. We take that information, we bring it forward to the commissioners and from there you all let us know whether or not you wanted to go on as a commission proposal. The third are staff proposals. Staff proposals are generally just minor text amendments to appendices and supplemental sections of the comprehensive plan document. And with that and with your concurrence, we'll go into the zoning decisions. And here's how the process will generally work. We'll read through a brief description of each case and if there's any public, a desire for public comment or if there are any discussions that want to be held for each individual case, we'll pull that one to the side and we'll keep reading through as we go forward. We'll adopt or vote on all the ones that were not pulled and then we'll go back to the ones that were pulled for public comment and/or commissioner discussion.
Perfect. Who do you have with you today that's helping you along, that's in the front row there?
In the front row here.
Yeah, who are these guys?
Oh, okay. I've got my staff here from the Planning Division and Community Development. We've got Tim Pierce on my, on the right here, we've got Mandy Elliott in the middle and Philip Westbrook on the left and they're going to be keeping track of, of the proceedings today.
Perfect.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, with that, we will go into the zoning decision, starting with ZD1. ZD1 is based on case Z65 from November of 2014 and Commission District Four involved a change from low-density residential to industrial compatible. The location is on the southwest side of Atlanta Road, east of Darwin Road. The Planning Commission recommended approval at their January 5th meeting.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak for or against ZD1? There are none.
Excuse me Chairman, excuse me Chairman, just for this ZD for District Four, I'd like to pull for discussion.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Okay, ZD2 is based on Z79 from November of 2014, located on the south side of Kennesaw Due West Road, east of Acworth Due West Road and Commission District One. The change was from low-density residential to neighborhood activity center. Planning Commission recommended approval.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak on ZD2? Commissioner, any comments? Thank you. We'll leave it on consent.
ZD3, based on Z54 from November of 2014, located on the east side of Atlanta Road, south of Jane Law Road and Commission District Two. Change was from medium-density residential to high-density residential. Planning Commission recommended approval.
Yes, sir. Thank you. We'll pull ZD3 for the record. Is there anyone here that wanted to speak on ZD3? There is none, but we'll pull ZD3.
ZD4, case number Z76 from November of 2014, located on the east side of Floyd Road, south of East West Connector and Commission District Four. Change was from community activity center to medium-density residential. Planning Commission recommended approval.
Thank you. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on ZD4? Any comments, Commissioner?
No.
We'll leave it on consent. Thank you.
Okay, ZD5, based on case Z83 from November of 2014, located on the west side of Chastain Meadows Parkway, east of I-575 and north of Ernest Barrett Parkway in Commission District Three. The change was from regional activity center in retail services subcategory to regional activity center in the high-density residential subcategory. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the high-density residential subcategory on the undeveloped parcels contained within the, the project area. However, they recommended that retail services subcategory remain on the parcels that currently contain retail, commercial use.
Thank you. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on ZD5? Commissioner? Thank you. We'll pull ZD5 for conversation.
ZD6, based on case Z85 from November of 2014, located on the southeast side of Wildwood Parkway, east of Wendy Hill Road. Change is from regional activity center, high-density residential subcategory to regional activity center, office subcategory. This is in Commission District Two. Planning Commission recommended approval.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak on ZD6? We'll put ZD6 on consent. Commissioner, is that okay? Thank you. Next item.
ZD7, based on case Z93 from December of 2014, located north intersection of Austell Road and Roberta Drive in Commission District One. The change was from neighborhood activity center to community activity center. Planning Commission recommends denial.
Thank you. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on ZD7? Commissioner Weatherford, any thoughts? Then we'll leave ZD7 on consent as a denial.
ZD8, based on case Z82 from December of 2014, located on the south side of Shalaford Road, east of Johnson Ferry Road and Commission District Three. Change was from neighborhood activity center to community activity center. Planning Commission recommends denial.
Thank you. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak for ZD8? There's one. We'll pull ZD8, Commissioner.
ZD9, from December of 2014, case Z48, located on the south side of First Drive, east of Sandy Plains Road. Change is from neighborhood activity center to high-density residential. This is in Commission District Three. Planning Commission recommends to delete from HDR to MDR, medium-density residential.
Thank you. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on ZD09? Any thoughts, Commissioner? Sure, we'll go, we'll come back to it. Thank you. We'll, we'll come back to it. Next case, please.
ZD10, based on case Z18 from February of 2015, located on the northeasternly side of Tricam Road, north of Shalaford Road across from Easy Circle and Commission District Three. Proposed change is from low-density residential to medium-density residential. Planning Commission recommends approval.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak on ZD10? ZD10, Commissioner, any thoughts? ZD10 will stay on consent as presented. Thank you.
ZD11, based on case Z6 from February of 2015, located on the south side of Roswell Road, west of Robinson Road and Commission District Two. Proposed change is from neighborhood activity center to community activity center. Planning Commission recommends denial.
Thank you. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on ZD11? There's one. The Commissioner has asked it to be input on consent as a denial. Is that in line with your comments? Are you okay with that? So we'll leave ZD10 on consent as a denial. For the record, that was Jill Flam from the ECA, that was Jill Flam from the ECCA, concurring with the recommendation of the Commissioner. ZD12, please.
Okay, ZD12 is based on case Z10 from March of 2015, located on the north side of Old 41 Highway at the terminus of Kennesaw Avenue in Commission District Three. The proposed change is from industrial compatible to high-density residential. Planning Commission recommends a deletion from high-density residential to medium-density residential.
Thank you. Is there anyone here wishing to speak for ZD12? Commissioner? ZD13?
ZD13, based on case Z15 from March of 2015, located on the south side of Veterans Memorial Highway, west of Nickerjack Creek and Commission District Four. Proposed change is from industrial to community activity center. The Planning Commission recommends a deletion from community activity center to neighborhood activity center.
Anyone here wishing to speak on ZD13? Commissioner? We're going to leave that on consent as, as presented by the Planning Commission, okay?
ZD14, based on case Z1 from March of 2015, located on the west side of Morris Hill Road, south of Camden Lake Parkway and Commission District One. Proposed change is from very-low density residential and rural residential to very-low density residential in its entirety. Planning Commission recommends approval.
Thank you. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on ZD14? Commissioner? Consent stays on consent as ZD14.
ZD15 is based on case Z23 from March of 2015. It's located on the east side of Bullard Road, north of Macklin Road and on the north side of Biscayne Circle in Commission District One. Proposed change is from very-low density residential to low-density residential. Planning Commission recommends approval.
Thank you. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on ZD15? Commissioner? Consent. We'll leave it on consent.
ZD16, based on case Z8 from April of 2015, located on the north side of Stylesboro Road, west of Mac Dobbs Road and Commission District One. Proposed change is from low-density residential and priority industrial to low-density residential in its entirety. Planning Commission recommends approval.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak for ZD6? I'm sorry.
Excuse me, I said PI, PI, priority industrial, I'm sorry, not public institutional, priority industrial. So that's LDR, from LDR, low-density residential and priority industrial to low-density residential.
Okay, guys, guys, let's, let's, let's not all talk at the same time because that's where I could confuse and where Jason doesn't know where to respond to. Jason, Jason, for the record, the book indicates low-density residential, public institution.
And that is correct, that is correct. I was in error, so it's LDR and PI, which is public institutional, to LDR in its entirety.
Thank you. And what does the Commissioner from the district have to say?
I'm thoroughly confused and I'll leave on consent.
Thank you. ZD16 will stay on consent as presented. Next case.
Okay, ZD17, based on case Z37 from April of 2015, located on the northwest side of Austell Road, north of Cunningham Road in Commission District One. Proposed change is from neighborhood activity center and low-density residential to high-density residential. Planning Commission recommends approval.
Thank you. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on ZD17? Commissioner? Remains on consent.
ZD18, based on case Z39 from April of 2015, located on the northeast side of South Cobb Drive, west side of Oakdale Road and north side of Wright Road in Commission District Two. Proposed change is from neighborhood activity center to high-density residential. Planning Commission recommends approval.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak on ZD18? Commissioner? We're going to pull ZD18 for conversation. Next case.
ZD19, based on case Z43 from May of 2015, located on the westerly side of Austell Road, south of Clay Road and north of Dobie Lane in Commission District Four. Proposed change is from medium-density residential to neighborhood activity center. Planning Commission recommends denial.
Anybody wishing to speak on ZD19? Commissioner, any?
Support consent.
Pardon me?
I support consent.
For, as an denial, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. That'll remain on consent as a denial.
ZD20 is based on case Z20 from May of 2015, located on the northeasternly side of Chastain Meadows Parkway and the westerly side of Bell's Ferry Road, south of Big Shanty Road in Commission District Three. The proposed change is from medium-density residential and community activity center to community activity center in its entirety. Planning Commission recommends withdrawal of this action.
Is there anybody here wishing to speak on ZD20? We'll pull ZD20 for hearing.
ZD21, it's based on case Z42 from May of 2015. It's located on the south side of Dallas Highway and the westerly side of Castile Road in Commission District One. The proposed change is from neighborhood activity center and low-density residential to neighborhood activity center in its entirety. The Planning Commission recommends approval with the removal of a proposed text amendment that went along with this zoning decision.
Thank you. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on ZD21? Commissioner, you okay with the as revised? ZD21 will remain on consent as revised by planning.
ZD22 is based on case Z35 from May of 2015, located on the south side of Old Stylesboro Road, west of Cheetum Road in Commission District One. The proposed change is from rural residential to very-low density residential. Planning Commission recommends approval.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak on ZD22? Commissioner? It will remain on consent as recommended.
ZD23 is based on case Z57 from June of 2015, located on the north side of the intersection of Shalaford Road and Wesley Chapel Road and the south side of Fricks Road in Commission District Three. Proposed change is from public institutional to medium-density residential. The Planning Commission has recommended a deletion from medium-density residential to low-density residential.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak on ZD23? There is. We can pull it for, ZD23 will be pulled.
ZD24 is...
Just a minute, Jason.
If, if I'm, if they're the Planning Commission's recommendation to delete LDR and Jill speaking about it, do we need to pull it?
No, we'll come back to 23 here real quick, Jill. Come on up. So the conversation we're having, Jason, is ZD23, the Planning Commission recommended LDR, a change to LDR, low-density residential. Jill, I'm assuming the ECCA concurs with that recommendation?
Jill Flam for East Cobb Civic Association, yes, we concur with that recommendation.
Okay, and that's a recommendation of the Planning Commission. The district commissioner agrees with that, so with everyone's consent, we'll leave it on consent as revised by Planning Commission.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
ZD24 is based on case Z36, excuse me, ZD24 is based on case Z36 from June of 2015. It's located on the north side of Hurt Road, east of Powder Springs Road in Commission District Four. Proposed change is from medium-density residential to community activity center. The Planning Commission has recommended denial.
Is there anybody here wishing to speak on ZD24? Commissioner, are you fine with, thank you, so that will remain on consent as a denial?
ZD25 is based on case Z63 from July of 2015. It's located on the west side of Holly Springs Road, south of Frankie Lane in Commission District Three. The proposed change is from public institutional to low-density residential. The Planning Commission has recommended approval.
Thank you. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on ZD25? Commissioner? ZD25 will remain on consent.
ZD26 is based on case Z79 from August of 2015. It's located on the northwest corner of Dallas Highway and Mount Cavalry Road in Commission District One. The proposed change is from low-density residential to neighborhood activity center. Planning Commission has recommended denial.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak on ZD26? Commissioner, are you fine with the recommendation? Pardon me?
Discussion.
Thanks. We'll pull ZD26 for conversation.
ZD27 is based on case Z71 from August of 2015. It's located on the west side of Tyrrell Mill Road across from Brookview Road in Commission District Two. Proposed change is from community activity center and medium-density residential to medium-density residential in its entirety. Planning Commission has recommended approval.
Is there anyone wishing to speak on ZD27? Commissioner, we'll leave it on consent.
ZD28 is based on case Z73 from August of 2015, located on the southeast corner of, or the southeast intersection of Roswell Road and Old Canton Road in Commission District Two. The proposed change is from low-density residential and neighborhood activity center to neighborhood activity center in its entirety. Planning Commission has recommended approval.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak for ZD28? There is one. We'll pull it. ZD28 will be pulled.
ZD29, our final zoning decision to consider, is based on case Z81 from September of 2015. It's located on the northeast corner of Canton Road and Chastain Corners, west side of Centerview Drive in Commission District Three. Proposed change is from low-density residential and neighborhood activity center to neighborhood activity center in its entirety. The Planning Commission has recommended approval.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak on ZD29? Commissioner? That's a consent. Okay, so what we're going to do is we're going to go through the consent. Phil, stick with me, okay? Mandy, make sure I get this right. And Clark, I'm going to go through this slowly as well so that hopefully my notes, hopefully all of our notes are the same. Commissioners, if, if we speak out of town, if we speak out of line, this is what you understand, if you would, just, just let me know quietly. On consent would be ZD2 as presented, ZD4 as presented, ZD6 as presented, ZD7 as a denial, ZD10 as a presented, ZD11 as denied, ZD13 as changed and recommended by the Planning Commission, ZD14 as presented, ZD15 as presented, ZD16 as presented, ZD17 as presented, ZD19 denial, ZD21 as revised by Planning Commission, ZD22 as presented, ZD23 as revised by Planning Commission, ZD24 denial, ZD25 as presented, ZD27 as presented, ZD29 as presented. Is there anyone concur with that list?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioners, I'll bring forward a motion to approve the consent as presented and reviewed. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Call the question. Motion carries five zero. Okay, so now we'll go to those items that were pulled, beginning with ZD1. And what we'll do is if you could just recap again, Jason, what, what the recommendation is, both from staff and Planning Commission, and then I'll ask again if there's anyone that would like to speak and then we'll, we'll defer to the Commissioner.
All right, we'll go back to ZD1. Again, this is on the southwest side of Atlanta Road, east of Darwin Road, based on case Z65 from November of 2014. Proposed changes from low-density residential to industrial compatible and the Planning Commission has recommended approval of the action.
Thank you. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on ZD01? Commissioner Cupid?
Yes, thank you Chairman. My concern with this particular item is that all along Atlanta Road, we have a hodgepodge of...
Excuse me, Commissioner. Can we turn her mic up at all?
Thank you.
The other way around.
I'll lean forward towards my mic, but we have a hodgepodge of commercial, industrial and neighborhood, um, commercial uses along this, um, strip. But behind it, we have an older residential community and multiple times this year, we've had zonings that have intensified the industrial nature of the uses along Atlanta Road without taking into account the impact that it's having on that residential area. And while I understand that there are certain uses that we are promoting near the base, I'm very concerned that just putting in industrial without some type of textual language to ensure adequate buffering for the residential neighbors, that it can end up facilitating a high contrast of uses. With that, I have a couple of questions and then I'm going to ask for your advice on that to see if there's maybe a lesser intense category.
Yes, ma'am.
For the other parcels that are along Atlanta Road, what is their future land use designation?
We'll get, yeah, as, as we can see on the map here, industrial compatible comprises many of the parcels that front immediately on Atlanta Road on both sides in that vicinity. Tim, can you zoom out just a little bit so we can get a little broader perspective? Okay, yeah, all the parcels fronting immediately on Atlanta Road generally have that industrial compatible future land use with several commercial and industrial zonings associated with those parcels.
Yes.
As you can see to the west there immediately behind it and those residential, established residential communities, you've got, you know, your low-density residential.
Yeah.
Um, and generally, you know, when you talk about zoning, you're going to have buffer requirements between commercial and industrial uses and residential communities. You know, I can't personally speak to the presence of buffers on those parcels fronting Atlanta Road, separating it from the residential areas, but I know that that's something that staff is pretty diligent in ensuring takes place when properties are, are, you know, rezoned or the land use changes in any way, even if it doesn't involve a rezoning. Somebody comes in for a plan review for a new use or a new development, they're going to ensure that they do their due diligence to make sure that those buffers are put in place.
I would like for that to always be the case, but I've just had even very recently another business item that came forward that was aiming to remove some of the buffer requirements that we put on through zoning with the support of the planning department. And I know we've, I think we've done this in years prior, but I'm wondering if not with this particular parcel, but as we approach this for 2017, if we can look at having some type of textual amendment that provides just general blanket protection that's communicated to anyone who is in that area, that there needs to be that buffering for residential. And I just ask that because again, it's becoming more clear that industrial uses is going to be supported along this corridor and I'm concerned that, you know, as those uses begin to intensify, that there just needs to be a general understanding that those residential properties need to be protected in that area.
So Jason, let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
You could take Atlanta off of this map and put Canton easily. Because Canton Road has a lot of the same characteristics where along the frontage, it's, it's industrial compatible and retail and commercial and all that. Immediately adjacent to it is residential.
Yes, sir.
With that said, I agree with where the Commissioner's going, that we need to try to, to, and I realize this is, this is a future land use math change in response to a, a zoning that occurred. So it's already zoned and so we can't really add, I mean, we can't, but I think what would be helpful is the text that she's asking for, that if, if the future zoning... is the text that she's asking for, that if, if the future zoning were to come forward, and even if it's not, that any, any kind of usage that we try to incorporate some kind of buffering for the, for the, the commercial property in Atlanta Road to the residential in the back, that, there's, there's no way in our lifetime that either Atlanta Road is gonna convert to all residential, or the media behind is gonna transform into something else, so we have to, we're gonna have to address what was not well thought out by our predecessors in terms of putting this kind of stuff so close without that built into it. So trying to retrofit, um, have we worked, um, have we worked a system where if we cannot resolve an issue today, we can bring it back in thirty days, is that doable? Jay Dana?
In reviewing last year's meeting, I doubt, that happened on at least one case, so yes, that is possible. It was brought, it was scheduled to be brought back at the next regular business meeting.
Okay, so Commissioner, what I'd recommend is that we hold ZD-one for thirty days to allow staff an opportunity to try to incorporate some kind of text amendment this year, as opposed to waiting till next year.
That would be ideal.
Okay, so that, if, are we, are we all in concert? Okay, so what we're gonna try to do is on Atlanta Road properties, wherever we can, the future land use map, where it's possible and probable and makes sense, we're not trying to overly burden anyone, we're trying to be common sense approach to this, but move the, move the ball forward, so to speak, in, in this issue of how do we, how do we, how do we, how do we create a better environment than currently exists without disturbing prior rights, which is a tremendous balance. So if you would work with the Commissioner on a text, and so as to give us time, I would, I would encourage us to bring this back to first meeting in February. Dana. Uh, boy, I hate it when you stand up.
Excuse me Chairman, Dana Johnson, Community Development, I apologize, if, if we're going to extend it on all of the properties in Atlanta Road, we'll probably need more time, because we'll want to inform the property owners that we would be considering a text amendment on their existing future land use.
So how long do you need?
Um, I would think that, um, and either the last meeting in February or the first meeting in March would be-
So this, if it's okay with the issue for the first meeting in March.
Okay, that'll work, thank you Dana.
So I would recommend a motion, we hold ZD-one till March to give time for staff to revise the item, if, if you wanna bring that forward.
Yes, second.
So I'll bring that forward as a motion, Jason, okay, to ZD-one, we held to March, to give you opportunity to revise it. Commissioner Cupid is second that, any other comments or questions, call the question, motion carries five-zero. We good, Clark, you guys scream out if we're getting too fast for you, that's gonna happen, but we can't, let me rephrase that, not if we go too fast, if we confuse the heck out of you, that's more probable. ZD-three.
All right, the next pulled case is ZD-three, uh, on the east side of Atlanta Road, south of Jane Lyle Road in Commission District Two, based on zoning case Z fifty-four from November of two thousand and fourteen. Proposed changes from Medium Density Residential to High Density Residential, the Planning Commission has recommended approval.
Thank you, is anyone wishing to speak on ZD-O-three? Commissioner Otte.
Thank you Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, um, this particular case, um, and I don't know if you remember, but majority of the, um, townhomes are up along Atlanta Road, matter of fact, most of the skinny part in the back is green space. So although the number, and it's, it's, um, although the number says RM eight, the actual number of units is not that high, and my concern is, I don't really think that we wanna have a HDR up against the neighborhood for some of the exact same reasons we just talked about in the last one, so I think that, um, leaving it as MDR is, is more appropriate. So I would make a motion, um, for denial of ZD-three.
It's a motion to deny ZD-three, is there a second?
Second.
Multiple seconds, call the question, motion carries five-zero, ZD-five.
ZD-five is located on the west side of Chastain Meadows Parkway, east of I five seventy-five and north of Ernest Barrett Parkway. This is in Commission District Three, it's based on case Z eighty-three from November of two thousand and fourteen. Proposed change is from Regional Activity Center and Retail Services subcategory to Regional Activity Center High Density Residential subcategory. Planning Commission's action included approval of the High Density Residential subcategory on the parcel that is to be developed into, uh, a residential use, some type of town home or fee simple residential development, and leaving the, uh, portions of it that have existing commercial buildings as the Retail Services subcategory.
Planning Commission, that was Planning Commission?
Yes, that was the Planning Commission's recommendation, sir.
Perfect, is there anyone here wishing to speak on ZD-O-five? Commissioner Burrow.
Okay, I'm good with the Planning Commission's recommendation, um, maintaining the RAC and RS category on the retail portion of the property and changing the northern portion to RAC and HDR as proposed.
Any comments, we'll second that for, I'll second that, any comments from the board, call the question, motion carries five-zero. ZD-eight.
ZD-eight is on the south side of Shalaford Road, east of Johnson Ferry Road in Commission District Three. Based on case Z eighty-two from December of two thousand and fourteen. Proposed change is from Neighborhood Activity Center to Community Activity Center, Planning Commission has recommended denial.
Thank you, and it is, I, Jill, please.
Good morning Commissioners, my name is Jill Flam, I'm with East Cobb Civic Association. ECCA recommend, um, agrees with the Planning Commission's recommendation of denial, and that this is to remain a NAC. However, we also have one additional recommendation, there is a fifty-foot strip of land at the east end of this parcel that is zoned R twenty for the purpose of delineating the commercial area from the residential area. ECCA recommends that this R twenty property be designated LDR in the future land use map, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner.
Since the R twenty strip is to remain as a zoning step, I, I would like to just recommend denial.
We have a motion and a second to deny ZD-eight. Any other conversation, call the question, motion carries five-zero. ZD-nine, please.
ZD-nine is located on the south side of First Drive, east of Sandy Plains Road in Commission District Three. Based on case Z forty-eight from December of two thousand and fourteen. Proposed changes from Neighborhood Activity Center to High Density Residential. Planning Commission has recommended deletion from HDR to MDR.
Thank you, is there anyone wishing to speak on ZD-nine? Commissioner Burrow.
ZD-nine, I would like to delete to MDR, because, um, Harbor Oaks, which borders that, is MDR. So I, I'd like to delete it from a NAC to MDR, not HDR.
There's a motion to deny to, or redo to, there's a motion to move to, from Neighborhood Activity Center to MDR, and there's a second. Any other comments, call the question, motion carries five-zero. ZD-twelve.
ZD-twelve, it's located on the north side of Old Forty-one Highway at the terminus of Kennesaw Avenue in Commission District Three. This is based on case Z ten from March of two thousand and fifteen. Proposed change is from Industrial Compatible to High Density Residential. Planning Commission has recommended deletion from HDR to MDR.
Thank you, is there anyone wishing to speak on ZD-twelve? Commissioner Burrow.
Okay. Um, this one's a little complicated too, because there's some retail and, um, residential. So rather than go from Industrial Compatible to HDR, um, I would like to go to, um, MDR and NAC.
MDR to Neighborhood Activity Center, which is actually, yeah, this is a revised map on the screen, correct?
Yes sir.
So is the MDR, is the map on the screen delineate your desires, Commissioner?
Yes.
Okay, so there's a motion to approve ZD-twelve to Media, Medium Density Residential and Neighborhood Activity Center as depicted on a revised map, revised B, revised dash B, and there's a second by Commissioner Otte, any other comments? Call the question, motion carries five-zero. ZD-eighteen.
ZD-eighteen is located on the northeast side of South Cobb Drive, west side of Oakdale Road, and north side of Wright Road in Commission District Two. It's based on case Z thirty-nine from April of two thousand and fifteen. Proposed changes from Neighborhood Activity Center to High Density Residential, Planning Commission has recommended approval.
Commissioner, well, is there anyone else wishing to speak on ZD-eighteen? Commissioner Otte.
Uh, thank you Mr. Chairman, this is another one of those cases where, um, at RA-six, it's just over the five units breaker, and I think Medium Density Residential is more consistent, um, with the surrounding area, so I would make a motion that to speak, change from a Neighborhood Activity Center to Medium Density Residential.
Second.
There's a second, any other questions, call the question, motion carries five-zero. ZD-twenty.
ZD-tw- ZD-twenty is located on the northeasterly side of Chastain Meadows Parkway and the westerly side of Bell's Ferry Road, south of Big Shanty Road in Commission District Three. It's based on case Z twenty from May of two thousand and fifteen. Proposed changes from Medium Density Residential and Community Activity Center to Community Activity Center in its entirety. The Planning Commission has recommended withdrawal of the action.
Thank you, and I believe we have someone to like to speak to this, if you'd come forward, sir, please.
Good morning Commissioners, I'm Phil Blackwell, Vice President of the Bell's Ferry Civic Association Incorporated. I'm here today to speak to the proposed changes to the future land use map in regards to ZD-twenty. One of the outcomes of Z twenty, uh, of Z, Z twenty case was that a fifty-foot buffer along Bell's Ferry Road was deleted to R twenty, and the thirty-five-foot buffer along the northern subdivision border was also deleted to R twenty. This was done to ensure the commercial zoning would, uh, that no commercial zoning would encroach onto Bell's Ferry Road, and thus set a precedent for future commercial zoning along the Bell's Ferry Corridor. Therefore, it's the Association's recommendation that a border of Medium Density Residential should remain on the future land use map, not be changed to Community Activity Center as proposed. Another outcome of Z twenty was a designation of two point six acres immediately adjacent to the Noonday Creek Trail as green space. The Association also wishes to thank the Planning Division for working to change the land use along Noonday Creek Trail to Park, Recreation, and Conservation. That being the case, the Association recommends that if the property develops per the Z twenty site plan, that the two point six acres of green space be changed on the future land use map to PRC. On January night two thousand and sixteen, a member of our Association appeared before the Planning Commission regarding ZD-twenty comp plan assessment, amendment. As a follow-up to this meeting, Planning Commissioner Tristi Trombetti wrote to the Association's President, Michael Stein, stating, and I quote, "Since the zoning applicant has not even applied for a land disturbance permit, we want to be sure that the project is really going to happen before changing the map and delineating uses based on that specific zoning, the MDR strip and PRC area specifically. If the project moves forward, then we will make the changes in January two thousand and seventeen, and be sure to include a residential strip on Bell's Ferry," end of quote. Based on what Planning Commissioner Trombetti has said above regarding ZD-twenty, the Bell's Ferry Civic Association Incorporated supports the Planning Commission's recommendation to withdraw ZD-twenty until next year, and we furthermore recommend that you favorably consider Planning Commission's recommendation as well."
Thank you, thank you sir. Any other speakers? Commissioner Burrow.
Yes, thank you. And thank you Philip and the Bell's Ferry Civic Association for being here today, um. While I agree and, and approve the, the buffer and the R twenty strips and, and the park, this has not come forward for development, and I think, um, I, I also agree with Planning Commission's recommendation to withdraw this and, um, add a note that it come back next year for consideration if the owner has moved forward with obtaining a land disturbance permit.
Yeah, I, I agree with where you're going, but I wanna offer an alternative for consideration, um.
But if I may just add that the, the R twenty strip and the, and the buffers are again zoning steps, that i- if anything comes, if anything changes with that in the development, it would have to come back to the Board of Commissioners during a zoning hearing. So that if, and that would be a public hearing, of course, and, and we would have anyone from the homeowners groups or Bell's Ferry Civic Association, an opportunity to object or oppose at that time.
So let me, let me present a scenario. I, I see where Planning Commissioner Trombetti's going, and I see where the Commissioner's going. But we currently have an active zoning with stipulations attached to it, um, that was in response to a specific request to a specific plan by a specific development, developer. And the idea was, and I may be totally wrong with my thinking, so don't be shy to say that it's too early in the week for me to be thinking this deep, but, um, we've already gone through establishing those buffers as part of, as part of that zoning. Any event the current project does not go through, let's say there's a land swap, obviously, or a land sold, is sold to somebody, another developer, those stipulations carry forward with the sale of that property, and through the underlying zoning, and I get that. Should the property go for sale, and it go to somebody that may be considering a totally different use, perhaps an MDR project? We still wouldn't like those buffers to be in place regardless, I'm, I'm thinking as a board. So I wonder if the intent of taking it up in two thousand and seventeen to see if they go forward with it, would be better served to go ahead and make these specific changes as recommended by the Bell's Ferry Civic Association? Wouldn't that be a stronger position against encroachment? Having it part of the future land use map in the event the project doesn't go forward, or it changes, or the land sales to a different use? How do we, what's the best way to get to the desired result? How's that for Tuesday morning?
And, and I tend to, I tend to, I tend to agree with Commissioner Burrow on that point, um, you know, the zoning stipulations, you know, have the force of law behind them, um, and any, any development in conjunction with the current zoning on the property must meet those stipulations. If those stipulations, uh, if there's a desire to alter those stipulations, the developer or the builder, whoever, would have to come back before you all, uh, as another business item to possibly amend or alter the stipulations. I, I think that is, is adequate in, in ensuring that those protections are in place. I don't necessarily think that changing the future land use map has- I don't necessarily think that changing the future land use map has, or the future land use plan has to be done in order to, to, to meet that same end. And I'll also defer to counsel if, if I've misstated anything in my comments.
My other comment is, if someone does have to come in, if someone does come in for other business to remove the steps or modify them, or if a total rezoning comes in, if the future land use map is already established as to what the long-term intended tension is, it may be, it's going to be more difficult for this board to consider it. Just to admit it. Commissioner Otte.
Um, I know it's going to sound strange, but I happen to agree with the Chairman.
It does sound strange.
But I, I think...
Pour me outside.
I, I think one of the things that...
It's snowing.
Yeah, I know.
No.
Um, but I think one of the things that the future land use map does, if I'm a developer and I have a product that I want to develop, the first place I look is the future land use map, because I'm not going to worry about the zoning category, because that's the thing we change to fit the product. But by looking at the future land use map, I can immediately see if my product is going to, can go in an area. So I agree with the Chairman that I think what needs to happen is, instead of this blanket change into CAC, that there needs to kind of show the split land use category, show where the buffers are as MDR, show where the PRC is, because now if I have a product and it would take this whole spot, but I see that there's MDR and there's PRC, well, then I'm going to look somewhere else. And then I'm not going to get into the zoning battle. The Bells Ferry Civic Association isn't going to have to spend all their time coming to a zoning hearing to fight it, because I will have moved on to a different spot, because I know it's not going to fit. So I agree with the Chairman that I think, I think what needs to happen is we need to hold this one to March and take a look at how you would divide it up and put the different things in place and then come back. I mean, it accomplishes the same thing, but I think it gives a better picture.
Well, okay, but we, we still don't know if it's going to be developed as it was zoned or not, um, at this point. And I, I don't have a problem identifying the MDR and the Community Activity Center and the park, but it may not be that. And if it's going to be anything else, it's going to have to come back through zoning. Not, not necessarily land use, so why can't we just, um, either deny it and leave it like it is, or withdraw it with the note that if this, that we wait till next year to see if the developer comes back with the plan that was approved through zoning and identify those, um, boundaries or buffers and park? And if not, leave it MDR and CAC as it is.
You have the pleasure to make your motion as you, or state your motion as you wish, and the latter of what you just said is actually what the Planning Commission recommended. So, I mean, that's out there on the table.
I haven't asked for a motion yet, sir. So hang on a minute. Commissioner Weatherford.
We are in the process of looking at the comprehensive plan and the future land use map as we speak.
Yes, sir.
Philip, right. Can't these suggestions and Commissioner Cupid's about buffers and everything be incorporated into that study and meet the same thing that we're trying to do here ad hoc? I'm, I'm just confused a little bit. I mean, can't we look at, I mean, it's a great suggestion about we've got Atlanta Road and Canton Highway, they're having issues with commercial encroaching, and we've got this area that, can't we look at those in our plan that we've got going on now?
We, we certainly could. There, there could be a bit of a timing issue, because, you know, we, we generally begin this process, uh, for annual amendments in August, September timeframe.
Just a question. I mean, if it's a timing issue, I mean, then that's fine, but I would suggest that, that all these be incorporated in that group's look.
We'll go back, huddle up, and, 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 and bring a recommendation to you.
That's a great offer.
Soon to be future date.
That's a great offer, but that direction's decided by the board. Dana, do you have anything you want to add to this conversation? The one time I need you to stand up, you're not. So I think, I think what we have is three Commissioners, four Commissioners, actually five Commissioners, all wanting to accomplish this right thing. We're just not sure how to get their best.
From, from a process perspective, um, since we have already received direction to bring something forward on March eighth, um, that would kind of leave that open for any changes. Other additional study on cases presented in front of you today, um, I think Mr. Gaines is correct in the timing issue, because the, by the time that the board gives final approval on the ten-year comprehensive plan update that's currently underway, that probably won't be happening until late twenty seventeen, probably late summer, early fall of twenty seventeen. So because of that timing issue and because of, um, some of the concerns of the Commissioners, I, I would recommend that we, we bring it forward back in March for any of the ones that you want to see amended here.
So Commissioner, basically, you have a, um, you have a recommendation on how you'd like to proceed. You have some Commissioners that might, that, I think if we had some more conversation, we might be able to come to an agreement.
Okay.
So...
So I would make a motion to hold this till, to come back in March.
March eighth.
March eighth.
A second by Commissioner Otte. Call a question. Motion carries five zero. So let's go to Z, ZD-26. Mr., Mr. Blackwell, are you still here? Thank you for being here. Um, I think, just by way editorial comment, we're all trying to head to the same way, which is try to protect the buffers and the green space. Um, it's just, we're trying to figure out, I think we need to have more conversations. The best, what's the best way to protect those interests, um, both short-term and long-term? So we're, I think we're on the same page. Commissioner Burrow, continue keeping contact with the Bells Ferry Civic Association. And you're obviously free to contact any of the Commissioners to talk about as well, but I appreciate you being here. Um, and to that point, if we, can we look at any of that property that's adjacent to the Noonday Creek that, as, as putting that in the PRC? Thank you. Thank you. So we're on Z-26, correct?
Yes, sir. ZD-26 is located on the northwest corner of Dallas Highway and Mount Calvary Road in Commission District One, based on case Z-79 from August of twenty fifteen. The proposed change is from Low Density Residential to Neighborhood Activity Center. Planning Commission recommended denial of the request.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak on ZD-26? Commissioner Weatherford.
Thank you. This has been a, uh, has a little history behind it, and this particular property, correct me if I'm wrong, Dana or Jason, was zoned commercial and grandfathered in as commercial. Uh, several structures were built on this particular piece of property. Uh, some question whether legally or not. Uh, it's been in question with code enforcement and community development offices for many, what, a year or so? Uh, and, uh, it, it appeared it was heading toward possible lawsuits and things of that nature, and so the applicant, working with staff and everything, came up with a low-rise office, uh, there. This particular corner is bordered, as you can see, by a church and, um, was that Public Institution, I guess? PI and that. So I think that that is a, um, a good recommendation to be a, uh, an act, Neighborhood Activity Center, I think, unless staff can tell me otherwise, so, what should it be?
Can you provide a little background as to why Planning Commission recommended denial?
Sort of along the lines of what Commissioner Weatherford was just stating, as far as those buildings being built there and there being questioned whether or not it was done so in a legal manner and whether or not the actual uses, uh, conformed with the zoning that was in place. That was basically it. They didn't really go into great detail about it, but that was the general gist of it, sir.
Okay. Is there anyone here wanting to speak on ZD-26? What's your recommendation, Commissioner?
I would recommend that we, uh, leave the, uh, recommendation LDR and AC.
As presented.
As presented, yes and not denied.
I'll second that motion. Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries five zero. Takes us to ZD-28.
ZD-28 is located on the southeast corner of Roswell Road and Old Canton Road in Commission District Two. It's based on case Z-73 from August of twenty fifteen. The proposed change is from Low Density Residential and Neighborhood Activity Center to Neighborhood Activity Center in its entirety. The Planning Commission's recommended approval.
Thank you. That's fine.
Jill Flem for the East Cobb Civic Association, and I'm going to tag-team some of my comments, uh, based on what the Commissioners were discussing on ZD-20. We have no problem with the Planning Commission's recommendation to convert, uh, the majority of this property to a NAC. However, on this piece of property, there is also a fifty-foot R-20 strip to the south to stop the expansion of commercial farther down on Old Canton. Um, this is especially important since the houses to the south of this property are older and they sit on very large pieces of land. We feel, as do the Neighbors, that it's very important for any developer in the future, if they look at one of these older houses, pull the future land use map, that they see LDR surrounding it on three sides. So, um, that is our recommendation, that the R-20 strip be labeled LDR on the future land use map. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Otte.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm, I'm in agreement, except that, um, the, the actual site plan for this site, most of that lot is a detention pond. There's very little structure on it. So I would, I would actually make a motion for denial to leave it at LDR, because I think it sends the same message, and even though it's part of the larger tract that has the convenience store, it's actually used as a detention pond, so I think it would be fine to leave it as LDR. So my motion is for denial. You can't, you can't see the detention on it, because when they reconfigure the QuickTrip, that's where the detention pond's going. They, they, the zoning, when they reconfigure the QuickTrip that's there, which is that rectangular building on the bottom or the north part, the building is turned ninety degrees and it will be, um, vertical north-south. But the detention pond now is actually where the letters ZD-28 are on your maps. Because everything's being moved around in the parking, the detention is actually moving to the lot that is in question. So, um, basically to keep the, as Jill said, the notion that we do not want the NAC to continue up the road, I think it's easier to just deny it and leave that LDR, because there's not going to be a structure on it anyway. Does that make sense, Mr. Chairman?
I understand what you're saying, yeah. Commissioner Burrow.
So this portion in pink would remain NAC?
Yes.
And this would remain LDR?
Correct.
Okay.
It's accomplishing basically the same thing, but without having to split it.
But what part of the QT will be on the LDR?
The detention pond.
Okay.
Right. And so it, since it's mostly not a structure...
Okay.
It just, it's easier than trying to just draw an arbitrary line across the middle of a lot.
I'd agree with that.
What about the R-20 strip?
Well, the R-20, that's a zoning, that's a stipulation in the zoning, so that can't change. And, and that's been, it's been there ever since the QuickTrip was put in place first time.
Yeah, but are they, are they going forward with this?
They are. They're, they're actually, there's another business item coming in, um, in February.
Okay.
So my motion is to deny.
Second.
Second. Call a question. Motion carries five zero. So that takes us through the end of the ZDs.
Before we move off to ZD, can I just, um, ask staff to look at something?
Sure.
Um, Dana, with the reintroduction of RA six, all right, which a lot of the Commissioners have used in various forms, and typically, uh, as we know, it, it just crosses over from LDR to MDR. My concern is that by arbitrarily just going right to MDR, which is five to twelve, I think we put the wrong message on the map. So what I'd like staff to look at over the next year is, do we want to adjust, um, or how do, how we want to address the RA six? Because we go from RA six to RM eight and then RM twelve. And I think that most of the Commissioners have used the RA six more as an extension of RA five than they have as an RM eight. And I think RA six being in the high-density residential maybe kind of puts the wrong thing on the map. So if you could take a look over the next year, how to address that.
We clear on that? Okay. Before we go into CP, I want to take five minutes. So it's ten oh nine. That means we come back, what, ten fourteen?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Good morning and welcome back to the Board of Commissioners Comprehensive Plan Amendments for two thousand and sixteen. We've been through the zoning decision cases. We're now starting with the Commissioner proposals. Jason?
Yes, sir. All right. Before we get started, I just want to reiterate for the public's benefit the process behind the commission proposals. As I stated at the very beginning of our hearing this morning, these are primarily based on feedback gathered by staff from various sources. That information is then brought forward to the commissioners and we are given, you know, permission to go ahead and put those items on the agenda as a commission proposal. This year's commission proposals specifically were derived from staff recommendations. I just wanted to go ahead and put that out there so that everyone is fully aware that, you know, that's the process and how they generate it. They're not literally commissioner proposals. Just disclaimer. With that, we have four items for consideration in Commission District One. The first of which is CP one dash one. It's located on the north side of Dallas Highway, west of Morris Hill Road. The proposed change is from very low-density residential to very low, very low-density residential and neighborhood activity center with an associated text amendment. Planning Commission recommends denial of this action.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak on CP one dash one? Commissioner Weatherford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, as Mr. Gaines said, that when, I guess, beginning of last year, I asked staff to take a look at all the different possible issues that we had in our areas that could be corrected that would save us some, uh, some discussion in the future, possible zoning opportunities there. And this happened to be one of them. Uh, I believe that the Planning Commission decided to deny it because there's really no pressing reason to do it and we could wait and see if anything came up in two thousand and sixteen. And I tend to agree with them, so I would support withdrawal of this one, sir.
Thank you. Would you make that a motion? We're going to go through these one by one, okay? So.
I would like to propose that we withdraw CP one dash one.
One or deny it? Or withdraw? What would you prefer?
Either is fine, sir.
Counselor? Doesn't matter?
Withdraw.
Uh, deny.
Deny.
I would propose to deny it.
Is it motion to deny by Commissioner Weather or second by Commissioner Ott? Call the question. Motion denies. Passes five zero. Next item.
Okay, CP one dash two is located at the intersection of Morris Hill Road and Stylesborough Road. Proposed change is from very low-density residential and low-density residential to a neighborhood activity center. Planning Commission's recommendation involved denial of the parcel on Morris Hill Road being changed and approval of the parcel fronting Stylesborough Road.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak on CP dash one dash two? Commissioner Weatherford.
Thanks, sir. I support the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation approving the change for the parcel on the south side. East of Morris Hill is submitted and denying the proposed change on the located on the east side of Morris Hill, south of Stylesborough.
There's a motion and a second by Commissioner Ott. Call the question. Motion carries five zero. Next item.
CP one dash three is located on the north side of Dallas Highway, east of Bob Cox Road. Proposed change is from rural residential to neighborhood activity center with an associated text amendment. Planning Commission recommends denial.
Is there anybody wishing to speak on CP dash one dash three? Come forward, please, if you would. Each speaker will have three minutes to present their thoughts. Thank you.
My name is Newt Nickel. I live at thirty-one forty Dallas Highway. I just wanted to take a couple of minutes and thank Commissioner Weatherford for meeting with our community. We had a good productive meeting and discussed this particular situation. This was, the land use plan was changed approximately thirteen years ago as a result of a citizen's petition. Not something the county came up with or the government came up with, the citizens came up with. It's come up several times since then and always been voted unanimously to not rezonate and to not change the land use plan. It's always been unanimous. And uh, based on the discussions with Commissioner We- uh, Weatherford, I just wanted to take a moment to thank him for working with us and contingent upon the denial of this proposal. We have other speakers here, but I don't think that'll be necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Ma'am?
Good morning. Um, my name is J D Smith and I live at three-two-three-one Bob Cox Road in West Cobb. My property backs up to Browns Lake that is three hundred and fifty feet from this property. Browns Lake is a ten-acre lake that sits between Bob Cox Road and Dallas Highway. Currently, it has eleven homes that surround the lake, all who sit on two-point-five to eleven-acre parcels. We all bought land here to build our homes on because of the nature and beauty of the lake and the large rural residential parcels. The current land use plan was put in place to protect Browns Lake. Between twenty-five and thirty of our residents from Browns Lake community came to the Planning Commission two weeks ago to oppose the land use change, but were not counted and most had to work today. As you know, it was voted down five zero, so I wanted to just submit this signed petition on the record.
CP will take it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any other speakers regarding CP dash one dash three? Yes, ma'am.
Uh, good morning, Commissioners. My name is Gabriela Corneos and I am the Communications Chairman and Plan Representative for Heritage Oaks, which is on Dallas Highway immediately adjacent to the Browns Lake community. And I am here simply to let you know that many of the residents at Heritage Oaks, a community of a hundred and sixty-five homes, which I'm sure you've heard of because I've written you recently, is in full support of the position of Browns Lake and we thank the Commissioner for his decisions in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Just for the record, okay?
Yes, sir.
If you could, come back. You said you were in full support of the Browns Lake's position. What is the Browns Lake's position in your mind?
Oh, there, I'm sorry. I, we're, I'm in support, we are in support of their request to maintain this property as it is, the z- the current zoning.
The current, the future land use, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Current of future land use plan zoning, I'm sorry.
Very good. Just want to make sure that we are on the same page.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other speakers? Commissioner Weatherford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this particular piece has been brought forward as, as Mr. Nichols said many times and we had one particular application that we worked through and we're working on some type of resolution and it was withdrawn, so uh, staff and I looked at this, thought about one way to make it easier uh, to work with whoever might apply for something in the future. But I see no pressing reason to change this and I would recommend denial as approved and recommended by the Planning Zone.
Thank you. So there's a motion and a second. Any conversation? Call the question. The motion carries five zero.
CP one dash four is located on the north side of Dallas Highway, east of Holland Road. Proposed change is from very low-density residential to public institutional. Planning Commission has recommended approval.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak on CP dash one dash four? Commissioner Weatherford?
Thanks, sir. I recommend approval as presented.
Now, second, is there any comments? Call the question. Motion carries five zero.
All right. We have no commission proposals in Commission District Two, so we'll move on to Commission District Three. We have CP three dash one, which has been split into four subsections, A through D. It's at various locations in the Town Center Community Improvement District along the Noonday Creek Trail. The proposed change is to make the general path of the right-of-way for the Noonday Creek Trail a PRC, uh, future land use designation. Uh, Planning Commission has recommended approval.
Okay. Let's, let's do CP three, one two, one A, B, C, and D together since they're all related.
Okay.
So if you would recamp.
We'll start with CP three dash one A.
That's the one you just presented, right, Jason?
Excuse me, sir?
Is that the one you just presented?
Well, yes, yes. I did, I did them all together, but I thought you were saying you wanted me to take them each.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. I misheard you. Thank you, Jason. You and I are going to get on the same page yet. And I apologize. Um, is there anyone wishing to speak on any of the CP dash three dash one A dash one dash three dash one B dash three dash one C dash three dash one D? Commissioner Burrow.
Yes. I'm definitely in support of this. I think it's um, great that we're identifying the, the trails and, and green space um, here for, in our land use plan. And I think uh, the Bell's Ferry Civic Association and I see Carol Brown is here from Canton Road Neighbors are also in support. So with that, I make a motion to approve CP three, one, A through D inclusive.
The second by Commissioner Weatherford. Any comments? Call the question. Motion carries five zero. Just for the record, this is, this is, this is what Dana was trying to point out to me earlier when I was trying to make comments and he was already saying we've already done it, so thanks, Dana.
Okay, uh, we've got seven items to consider in Commission District Four, starting with CP dash four dash one, located on the south side of Blair Bridge Road, east of Bridgeport Court. Proposed change is from high-density residential to TCU, transportation, communication, and utilities. Proposed property or the property in question is actually owned by the Georgia Department of Transportation.
And Planning Commission recommendation.
Oh, excuse me. Planning Commission's recommendation on that was approval, sir.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak on CP dash four dash one? Commissioner Cupid?
Yes, Dana, may I get your assistance with this particular item?
Is your mic on?
No, it's not. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, what did you say?
I, I asked for Dana Johnson's assistance with this item from past discussion, but.
Yeah, Commissioner, we, we did speak about it during the break and um, it was brought to my attention that there was a desire to withdraw this particular item on the record.
Thank you. If you would make a motion to deny.
Yes, um, my motion is to withdraw this item.
Deny this item. I believe that Council, Council this earlier that she'd prefer denial, correct?
Yes. Dana, might, if I may, get your assistance, please.
In the, in this case, um, excuse me, Dana Johnson, Cub County Community Development. Uh, in this particular case, um, because Georgia Department of Transportation has purchased this land for a park and ride lot and we are not sure when this will be brought forward for their development of this as a park and ride lot, we could either withdraw until the time they do that or deny it and we can bring it back at a time when it's appropriate, whichever the board and council determine determines is the best approach.
So our prior communication was for withdrawal. I could still deny it. It would accomplish the same purpose.
Ed?
Yes. So my motion would be to deny CP four one.
Second.
Call the question. Motion carries five zero.
CP four dash two is located at the intersection of Blair Bridge Road and Six Flags Drive. Proposed change is from medium-density residential to neighborhood activity center. Planning Commission has recommended denial.
Thank you. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on CP dash four dash two? Commissioner Cupid?
Yes, thank you. There were a number of people that have expressed concern about this particular plan amendment change and I am in support of the residents in that area. We've had multiple issues with the commercial property that's at that intersection and surrounding it is primarily residential. So I'm in support of denying this, understanding that if um, the, um, the property owners that desire the future land use map desire to commercial, to develop their lot commercially, they still have the ability to come forward through the zoning process. But this will communicate that the overall intent of the community is for that area to remain residential. So with that, I support the Planning Commission recommendations to deny CP four dash two.
Second.
Any comments? Call the question. Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
CP four dash three is located on the south side of Hurt Road, west of Austell Road. Proposed change is from public institutional with a text amendment to public institutional with the removal of the text amendment. Planning Commission recommended approval of the request.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak on CP dash four dash three? Commissioner Cupid?
Yes, I move to support Planning Commission's recommendation.
Second.
Any comments? Call the question. Motion carries five zero. Next case, please.
CP four dash four is located north of Veterans Memorial Highway between Zenola Drive and Burris Road. Proposed change is from neighborhood activity center to low-density residential. Planning Commission has recommended approval.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak on CP dash four dash four? Commissioner Cupid?
Move to support Planning Commission recommendation.
Second.
Any comments? Call the question. Motion carries five zero.
CP four dash five is located at the intersection of Old Alabama Road and South Gordon Road. Proposed change is. Proposed change is from Neighborhood Activity Center to Low Density Residential. Planning Commission is recommended approval.
So moved.
Okay. Let me see if there's anybody wanting to speak on four-point-five. Seeing none, thank you, Commissioner. Is it, is there's a motion? Is it a second? Somebody? Second, I'll second the motion. Call a question. Motion carries five-zero. I didn't hear him. That's why I asked for.
C P four dash six located north of Lions Club Drive and west of Glora Drive. Proposed changes from Community Activity Center to Low Density Residential. Planning Commission is recommended approval.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak for C P dash four dash six? Commissioner?
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Much better. Call a question. Motion carries five, five, zero. Well, you got a, you got a, it's not me, it's them. What's next, Jason?
And C P four dash seven is located on multiple parcels west and east, uh, on the west and east sides of Mabelton Parkway, north of Factory Shoals Road. Proposed change is from a Community Activity Center to a Neighborhood Activity Center. Planning Commission recommended approval with the exception of two parcels that are the farthest west on the map shown. They both front on Boggs Road and the re- recommendation for those was to delete them to Low Density Residential.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak on C P dash four dash seven? Yes, ma'am. If you'd come forward, please. Absolutely. Sir?
Okay. My name is Charles Boggs and I represent my mother's estate. It's the corner of Mabelton Parkway and Boggs Road. And, uh, my family owns that lot, the lot south of that, and also the two lots along Boggs Road that were mentioned. And we had hoped that, uh, a commercial development would incorporate about a, about ten acres. We had hoped that we could get a commercial development that would help us and also the community some, something nice. And the two lots along Boggs Road, I'll let my niece speak for it, but they've always been zoned for like a, a planned shopping center. But we want, we want to list our property with a real estate soon and we want to have some kind of idea of what, what he can list it for and maybe, maybe keep the, keep the zoning either as a Community Activity Center or at least Neighborhood Activity Center and leave the ones along Boggs Road the same. But I let my niece speak about that because she owns one of the land properties there.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am?
Good evening. I'm Laura Boggs McLanahan. I live at five-seventy-one Boggs Road, here in Mabelton. As my uncle said, he and I have been trying to look after this, uh, ten or twelve acres that we originally had there, uh, as a family, community thing with aunts, uncles, grandfathers, and et cetera, at one time, living there. Most have died now, except for me and my cousin that lives next door. We had hoped to prepare, uh, this whole ten acres for some sort of a development and that every real estate people said it was, we would be better off doing it as a total. If you break it up like you're talking about land use, it would hurt us very much. So in proposed of doing something different and something nicer. If you just do little bitty things, it'll be just exactly like what's up in the Gordon Road that's hurting property values so right now. But if you could develop it as a whole thing, we were told it would be much improvement. We'd like your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any other speakers on C P dash four dash seven? We have Planning Commission's recommendation. Commissioner Cupid?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. And I appreciate the residents and property owners coming out and speaking today. This particular proposal had come to my attention because there are already consumes with respect, excuse me, concerns with respect to notice of property owners here. Um, I believe that they were originally informed about the NAC designation and not the residential designation.
Correct.
And, um, I didn't realize that all of those three parcels that are east of, or excuse me, west of Mabelton Parkway, um, were owned by the same property owner. Because I was, um, inclined to just make a decision on the eastern two and leave the, um, western two until March so that we can make sure that property owners had proper notice. But now I'm leaning towards, um, us waiting on the western parcels. If I may be clear from, if I, I'm sorry, I wanted to direct a question towards one of the speakers.
Absolutely.
Ms. Boggs. Does your family own all three adjacent parcels west of Mabelton Parkway?
The one at the corner of Mabelton Parkway and Boggs Road is owned adjacent, uh, adjournedly with all of us that inherited it from my grandmother. Okay? The one next to it is the cousin on Gordon Road or Mabelton Parkway. The one on Boggs Road is by the same cousin. The one behind it, the five acres are mine.
The five, okay.
There. So it's the whole family and we're all was wanting and had agreed to sell in that, um, like I say, it had been sort of a family compound since nineteen-thirty-something.
Okay. Thank you. Excuse me, Jason? Jason? What was staff's recommendation for the parcels?
Staff agrees with the, the concept of the potential to market and develop those properties in unison. You know, uh, and the Neighborhood Activity Center was what the proposed change was. Um, and as I mentioned in my disclaimer at the beginning of this section of the agenda, all of these proposals this year came generally from staff. So staff's recommendation is to go to a Neighborhood Activity Center for all of the impacted parcels.
Okay. I know that, um, the Mabelton Improvement Coalition has been taking a lot of interest in this particular corridor and has supported, um, maintaining that area as residential. I did not flesh out the matter again because I just assumed that we were not even going to vote on those two western parcels bec- today, um, because of, um, the notice issues. What I'd like to do to flesh out more dialogue, um, is for us to hold this until March and, um, better understand, um, the L D R, um, requests of the Coalition in light of the current property owners who are there. Um, I know P S C is an older zoning category and, and part of even moving to a NAC would have, have enabled us to clean this up, um, from where it is today. But there still is a, a contrast between the residential and NAC and I, and I've, I'm having a difficult time resol- resolving that right here.
Okay. Can I, can I ask a question? Um, if, well, I know I can. Let me, allow me to ask a question. Can we go forward with C P dash four point seven for all the parcels but for these four?
That would make sense. There, there's no conflict on the east side. So yes, we, I would support us making a decision at least for those, um, east of Mabelton Parkway.
Which would include the, the, the parcel that's in the northeast corner of Mabelton Parkway and Boggs as well?
I don't believe that's a Boggs property, the one that's north. No, okay.
Okay. We have any issues with that, staff?
No, sorry.
So Commissioner, if I could, I could encourage a motion that we approve all the recommendations but for the ones associated with those four parcels and that those be brought back on our April, March H, March H meeting.
Yes, Chairman. I support that. I, I do believe there was additional question by one of the speakers. And I just want to make sure that I addressed that prior to supporting the motion. Did you have an addition, excuse me, ma'am? Did you have an additional question?
I was asking.
I'm sorry. I think you're going to have to address it up here.
Don't go far, Jason.
Laura McLanahan again. Um, one of the things I was interested in, um, I was out of town when the first meeting occurred. Um, how does going from, um, the existing zoning to the presented, um, suggestion that you have, how would that affect us representing and talking to real estate people about the possibilities? What would it change for us?
Okay. I think that might be best addressed by staff.
Uh, Ms. McLanahan, just to clarify, you know, changing the future land use designation is not equivalent to changing the zoning. Underlying zoning of Planned Shopping Center will remain the same. The, the change in future land use would indicate the desire of the county to have a less intense, um, uh, land use there. And, but particularly what staff has recommended would be a more neighborhood scale, neighborhood-oriented retail, um, uh, development scenario. What the Planning Commission recommended with those two western parcels on Boggs Road is their change, their proposed change was to very low density, or excuse me, low-density residential, which would indicate a large lot, single-family residential use. So with, with that said, and kind of like what we talked about before on one of the previous cases, and I think Commissioner Ott mentioned it, was that, you know, if somebody's coming in looking to develop something, um, you know, they're going to look at the future land use initially and the underlying zoning is something that if it's already in place and they can work with it, fine, but that's something that can be more easily changed through their app, their applying to have it changed. So, um, you know, you know, the short answer is, uh, it would just change, uh, the big picture view as far as what the county policy states it wants to see on, on that particular, uh, piece of property.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Yes. And to sum, to sum it up as how I interpret it is our future land use map primarily is a guide. Your zoning is really what's going to drive what can happen on the property legally. So even with the changes that we could be proposing today, the properties could still be developed commercially under the current zoning that you have there. Um, but the future land use map does reflect how the board sees the area moving in the future. And that does have some sway in zoning decisions. So I, you do have interest in being here today. It doesn't, what we do here today doesn't automatically limit what you're trying to do, but it can, um, it can provide some challenges if the zoning that's being questioned doesn't comport where the board sees this area going. Again, because of, um, what had been brought to my attention about there not being adequate notice of this site, uh, my support, um, the chairman's recommendation that we do approve the other parcels today as, um, uh, with the future land use designation as a NAC and that we hold the decision on the four parcels that you referred to, to us today until March so we can have further discussion on this, um, with you and the community.
I'll second the motion. Is there any comment from the board? Call a question. Motion carries five-zero. So now we run into, or we move into staff proposals.
Yes, sir. This is the final portion of our agenda. Uh, again, staff proposals are generally, uh, minor text amendments to appendices and supplemental sections of the Conference Plan document. This year, we have two staff proposals, starting with S P zero-one. Uh, involves the revision of the texts of the supplemental plan section on, of the implementation program and update associated study synopsis. To give you a little more background on that, we are recommending the addition of, uh, three items to the supplemental plan section as stated in that description. We would add the Town Center five-year update, Town Center L C I five-year update, excuse me, uh, the Powers Ferry Master Plan five-year update and the Dobbin's Air Reserve Base Joint Land Use Study. Those items will be added and if the first two actually supersede older items and those older items would be removed and replaced by those two new five-year updates.
Thank you. Is there anyone wanting to speak on S P dash one? Commissioners, I'll bring this forward as a motion to approve as presented by staff and as revised. Is there a second? Is there a second, Commissioner Ott? Call a question. Motion carries five-zero. S P dash two.
Okay. Final item. S P zero-two involves an update of the redevelopment inventory. There are several sites, uh, in that section that had, were identified previously for, uh, redevelopment opportunities. And there were three, um, that were put forward, um, for removal from that particular section of the plan. Those three sites were site number thirteen, located at two-seven-five-five Canton Road, site number twenty-two at two-nine-five-five Cobb Parkway, and site number forty-four at two-four-one-seven Canton Road. Uh, the Planning Commission recommended approval of those three, but also added a fourth item, which is site number eleven at two-four-one-zero Canton Road. So there are four items total based on the Planning Commission's recommendation.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak on S, uh, S P dash two? If not, Commissioners, I'll bring forward a motion. We approve, approve S P dash two as revised and recommended by staff. Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any comments? Call a question. Motion carries five-zero. So here we stand. Um, yet another year passed with another Conference of Plan Use Map Amendment process nearly completed. Um, Phil, Jason, I want to thank you and, and Philip and Mandy and Tim for being here today and helping get this done. And Dana, your team did great as always. As was indicated earlier, this starts sometime in August, September. It takes us through to this period and as we see, we're going to be moving on for a couple of months, trying to solve, just getting past the finish line and all the issues. So we appreciate staff's hard work in getting this, getting this right. So we appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. County Manager, anything further?
No, sir, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We are adjourned.